Good morning. Today is the twenty-eighth day of September, the time is nine o'clock. The board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting, all three commissioners are present. Also, we have with us, if you can identify yourself for the record, start over here.
Joshua Smith, IT.
Sean Marine, paramedics.
Mike Work, operations.
Travis, Ruby, Ada County Sheriff's Office.
Stephanie Cali, HR.
Saul Sather, Ada County Elections.
Evan Hamilton, chairman.
Bob Perkins, Ada County, chairman.
Josh Brown, operations.
Brad Smith, Sessors Office.
I'll lose the Duncan Communications.
New IT guy?
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Beth Ma, Treasure.
Turn triple county clerk.
Alright, we're set to go. Mount Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are, there's one change.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove agreement one-three-seven-eight-four dash six dash twenty-three from the agenda. It's not ready for our consideration.
Okay.
Also, we have a bunch of people on the board.
Yes, yes, we do. What, what number is that?
It's number thirty-five.
Okay. There's been a motion to remove agreement number thirty-five from the agenda, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Alright, we also have with us on the bridge a number of people, we have Paul, Paul, Lori, Adam Schroeder, and Bob Garnier and Evan. Okay, first up, we have some volunteer boards to reappoint two volunteers to the Ada County Health Trust. Is there a motion or discussion?
Mr. Chair, I think one of them's here, maybe he'd like to speak to this item on the agenda, Mr. Ruby.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner, thank you Mr. Chair. I've been on the healthcare trust for nine years, I was appointed by, by the board back then, so this will be my fourth appointment. I've been the, the chairman of the trust since Darby retired from paramedics, but we do, we revisit that. So, it's, it's been a very good experience, it's a privilege, I understand a lot, and one of the values that we have, we also have Josh Smith, who's one of our trustees as well. One of the values that we have is we, we understand it better and we can share that information throughout, throughout our organization, through our various organizations and answer questions, so I would, I would be honored and humbled if you chose to reappoint me for another term.
Alright, thank you. Is there any, any further discussion?
We'll hear from Mr. Smith, too.
So, I've been on the trust for six years, this will be my third appointment if you, if you approve that, and so, I, along with Travis, I, it's a great opportunity, we learn a whole bunch about things that are happening with the healthcare, and obviously, it's a privilege to be able to, you know, to approve those bills as they come in, to be able to make sure we're doing things, at least paying. I realize you guys are the ones that approve how we do those things, but we're making the payments and making sure that happens on time, or at least approving them, and that's a privilege to see that and to watch that process, and then to be able to help our various departments understand a little bit. So, I also would be very privileged to, to accept another appointment, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the two volunteer board reappointments as listed on the agenda, with the terms of expiration as specified.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have some unfinished business. Application two-zero-two-three-zero-one-seven-two CPA Z C D A B C U M S P.
I think we have to remove it from the table first. Yes, so I move, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, okay, the application's been removed from the table, we have our development director here, you want to tell us, there was some just technical changes from our agenda, right, wasn't there, from the hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this was an item considered on the September thirteenth hearing, you moved to approve and table to give us some time to prepare the final documents, we've got the signed development agreement back this morning, and have updated the findings of fact, there was, I think, a, a date that was changed is all in the findings of fact, and prepared all the other documents, and submit those for your consideration.
Okay, is there any questions?
We, I, we didn't have changed anything from their plan, if I recall, or we didn't add anything, did we?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, there were no changes to, to the proposal with the, with the, the motion to approve.
When are they gonna start stacking up railroad ties?
That's correct, yes.
When are they gonna start stacking them up?
I think it'll be a little, a little while before they get stacking, but.
Alright, just, just, just so people understand for the record, this is a company that is gonna stack up a whole bunch of railroad ties for the railroad, and then railroad comes in and gets them, correct?
That's correct, yeah, this is an industry, they're located in the Dalles and I think another plant back east that supports our railroad system, they actually use the railroad corridor for one of the first projects I've seen that actually leverages that.
Am I correct, they, they treat the, the railroad ties out there, they stack them and then they treat them.
Yep, they finish them, treat them, stack them, and ship them out on the rail.
Okay.
We granted a variance for them, was it regarding a fence, was that right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, there was a variance associated with screening, you know, I, there was a six-foot fence requirement, but these stacks will be, you know, thirty, forty feet, so we, there was that, that was included as well.
And it's like a, it's like a four-hundred acre site, correct, and it's basically in the center of that.
Big acre, it's big parts of love on the main rail line.
Correct, yep, out towards the Orchard Access Road out there by the, the facility that the military has for training.
Okay, well, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to approve the revised findings of fact and conclusions of law for two-zero-two-three-zero-one-seven-two CPA Z C D A V C U M S P Horrocks Engineers.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to new business, we have a couple of resolutions that will need to have a public hearing on, so I'll open a public hearing on resolution twenty-nine-twenty, a resolution adopting amendments to the Ada County Deferred Compensation Plan to implement the CARES Act. Okay, is there anyone here to speak to that?
Chairman Commissioners, I'd be happy to.
Good.
Specifically, this is the CARES Act, there was additional language related to retirement funds, and it allows for special distribution options, also some additional rollover rules, and permissible loans. Additionally, folks who may have gone off of work and coming back, it has a lot of details, it does not necessarily directly impact us significantly, it is really just ensuring that we are compliant in our language with the federal rules as required in the CARES Act.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll close the public hearing on resolution twenty-nine-twenty and accept a motion.
I move to approve resolution number two-nine-two-zero as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution twenty-nine-twenty-one, a resolution for sole source procurements of a surveillance and door control system, maintenance agreement from Stanley Converged Security Solutions. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a sole source resolution for the maintenance of the Stanley Security system out at the jail, back in twenty-sixteen, we went out to bid for the jail's security system. Stanley Security was the subcontractor for that project, so it makes sense that they would be the ones doing the maintenance for their own system.
Okay, is there any further discussion? I hear none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number twenty-nine-twenty-one and ask for a motion.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-nine-twenty-one as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have procurement Bob in front of us.
Good morning, Commissioners. For this morning, we, we have a couple items for your, under procurement. So, the first of which is opening a bid two-three-zero-six-nine, the Ada County Trial Court Administration Treatment Center Tenant Improvement Project, and we received eleven responses for this project, so really good response.
That's good.
Yeah, so Evan's got our bonfire queued up, and if you're ready for open, we'll proceed.
We're ready.
Just take a second as, as Evan unseals this, but today we'll be looking for the name of the bidder, the total bid amount, and that total bid amount will, will include a two-hundred thousand dollar contingency for the project, that's an owner's allowance. The spreadsheet's gonna open up here, and Evan, you'll have to kind of help walk me through here, because there's quite a few of them, there we go. Okay, so our first bidder is Alpine Construction, and they have a total bid amount of two million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred eight dollars. Our second bidder is Anderson Construction, and they have a total bid amount of two million, five hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars. Our third bidder is E K C Incorporated, they have a total bid amount of two million, five hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred ninety dollars. Bidder number four is E S I, and they have a total bid amount of two million, eight hundred six thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars. A C Company is our next bidder, they have a bid amount of two million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars. Kreisen Bet Constructors are our next bidder, and they have a bid amount of two million, four hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars. Lacy Mechanical Incorporated has a bid of two million, seven hundred twenty thousand, six hundred dollars. Leyton Construction has a total bid amount of two million, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars. Prusik Construction has a total bill, total bid amount of two million, six hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars even. Radix Construction has a total bill, bid amount of two million, three hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred eighty dollars. Stroth General has a to, total bid amount of two million, five hundred twenty-seven thousand, and fifty-eight dollars. And that's it, okay, so all those bids are pretty close together.
I'm sure that's pretty close together.
It looks like a pretty even spread there.
Yeah, so that's, that's, uh.
How comprehensive, is that, is that, is that include the HVAC and the, and the beams? Does.
Yeah.
Anything that's left out, but still has to be done.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If, if I may, we have a separate contract for H D A C, which is being paid for with ARPA funds.
Right.
It includes adjusting some stuff on the roof. This includes replacement of roof, all of the interior design, all of the HVAC work that's gonna happen inside of the building, and just to let you know, this is, well, this is basically what we budgeted a year ago, everything's like right in the ballpark.
Good. Alright, alright.
So, Commissioners, we would like to request this be tabled for award to the October third, two thousand twenty-three open business meeting.
Okay.
I thought you were supposed to be a contractor shortage with all these big projects going on, is it kind of unusual to get this many bids?
We haven't seen this many bids in quite some time for a project, so.
Well, these are all big contractors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, maybe it's a sign of.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's winter work and it's inside.
Okay, well, that makes sense.
Yep, keeps the people busy inside working.
During the winter, right.
Well, the roof wouldn't be inside work. Okay, alright, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to table the award of bid twenty-three-zero-six-nine, Ada County Trial Court Administration Treatment Center Tenant Improvement to October third, two thousand twenty-three.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have another opening, Design Services for Election Office and Warehouse Remodel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the opening for R F Q two-three-zero-seven-seven, Design Services for Ada County Elections Office and Warehouse Remodel, and we received four responses for this project, and if you're ready for us to open, we'll proceed.
Go ahead.
So, on this opening, we're just looking for the name of the firms, and our first firm is C S H Q A. Our second firm is Cushion Terrill, our third firm is Urstad, and our fourth firm is Z G A Architects and Planners Chartered. So, those are the four firms that have proposed on this project, and we would like to request that this be tabled for final ranking and request to enter fee negotiations to the October tenth, two, two thousand twenty-three open business meeting.
Okay.
So, this is Warehouse and Election Office Remodel, which part of the election office is getting remodeled.
It's the, the office at four hundred Benjamin.
Yeah, where they, we talked about that.
This is with T C A leaving the building and elections, reconfiguring the space that's in there to better utilize that space.
Well, we've decided that already.
We, we've talked about that. No, no, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what the design is for, is to.
Where the upstairs portion.
Yeah, figure out how to best utilize that space, so they're gonna hopefully come up with a good plan for us.
Alright, that's good. Alright, do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion, go ahead.
I move to table the final rankings and request to enter a fee negotiations for R F Q two-three-zero-seven-seven, Design Services for Ada County Elections Office and Warehouse, Warehouse Remodel to October tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners, appreciate it.
Okay, we have a page full licenses. Four new license and one license transfer, I'll accept a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I will move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including thirty-eight catering permits, four licenses and one license transfer, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, now we have with us our distinguished clerk. You're up.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you have in front of you the designation for the polling places for the November seventh election. I've got Saul here in the room as well, if you have any detailed questions that you'd like to ask that I probably don't know the answer to.
Are there, are there any new or changed polling places from a year ago?
There are some, Saul, do you know how many that is, or?
Well, from a year ago, there's just a handful, from actually May, there's quite a few, because May, we had such an odd distribution of voting availability because of the consolidation of major, so we had to change the number of precincts from May, so there's a decent number from May to this time, but, you know, we're in approximately about the fifteen range from May to this time, single digits from last November.
So, when I were talking earlier, there seems to be a trend, not a huge one right now, but one we're keeping our eye on, is that a lot of churches that we have historically used are bringing on daycare schooling type systems, and they're telling us now that because they have the schools in place, they don't want to be pulling places, so we're keeping an eye on that, that seems to be something that could present, present a problem in the future if a lot of them go that direction. But overall, a hundred ninety-seven precincts, a hundred and seventy-six physical locations, there are some dual precincts. There's actually one triple precinct named after me, just for three precincts.
Is that your precinct?
That's not my precinct. But there are fourteen sites that will be doing ballot on demand, so we've expanded from our last election slightly.
From ten.
Saul and his team are doing a phenomenal job and making sure that that runs smoothly as we very deliberately expand that. The reason for that is because we have, is it four hundred and two different ballot styles?
Yep.
Four hundred and two different ballot styles, one precinct has fourteen different ballots.
Wow.
And expecting our election workers to get that perfectly right when someone walks in the door, to know which ballot goes to which person is sometimes a challenge, and this significantly reduces that risk for the voters to get the right ballot, so we're excited for that.
So, the system just by name automatically sorts it?
As you, as you checked in, it pulls up the ballot that's designated just for you, and then we print it right there on demand, and so then they walk away with a printed ballot, rather than pre-printing them all, having them in stacks and having someone come in and check out, yeah. So, we're excited for them. So, that's the big thing, we're looking for the Commissioners today, is to designate those polling places, but it's not the only thing that we're working on in our office, there's a couple more days to year end, so we're closing out the books for this last fiscal year, as well as go live of our new financial system. We're asking for your continued support, the team's been working phenomenally over the last several weeks. They've made the decision on Wednesday that everything's in the green, and they're done such a good job up to this point that they don't anticipate weekend work, which is a, a pretty significant thing for a software changeover, so I'm excited about that, especially the, the folks from Procurement. They're gonna have the heaviest lift right out the gate, because come Monday, everyone will be using the new procurement system and spending all the money that the commission approved for them for this next fiscal year, and they're gonna have to get used to that new system. We don't anticipate any large issues, but obviously, there's always fine tuning that will take place for several weeks and months of a new system, so.
So, Monday will be the first day of go live? You bringing in a marching band or anything?
No marching bands.
We could tie a red ribbon around a monitor and you could just cut the.
This will be a quiet affair.
Cut the ribbon.
Once, once we get all comfortable using the new system, maybe they will throw a party then.
Okay, good idea.
Cautiously optimistic.
Yes, but obviously, fine tuning over the, the coming weeks. We will have a contractor onsite, I think it's Anon, who's gonna be here.
That's great.
And that'll be a huge asset for us, to have someone physically on, on station while we're working through those first few steps that procurement's gonna be working with, so we're excited, everyone's in a good mood. But obviously, the biggest thing for us right now is Commissioners designating those polling places when we get off to the races. Other significant dates that probably are good for everyone to understand, pre-registration deadline on the thirteenth of October. Early voting will start the twenty-third of October, absentee ballot application will start on the twenty-seventh. We will have our logic and accuracy test for our system on the second of November, and we encourage the public and anybody that has questions about the security and flow of elections to come out and, and view that, and then early voting will end on the third of November for us to deploy all these precincts on the seventh.
So, when do you start accepting absentee applications?
Uh, we're accepting them now, we've, we accept them all year long, it's just the absentee ballot application deadline is the twenty-seventh, so if you don't get an absentee in by the, request by the twenty-seventh.
We had a lot of absentee requests.
I don't know how many we've had so far.
We're under ten thousand for this election so far, we're anticipating probably right around fifteen when it's all said and done.
That's what the normal is, about fifteen.
Well, for this size election and this amount of turnout, yeah.
We expect for total turnout.
Around thirty-five percent.
Which would be?
About a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand.
Really?
Yeah.
With the, the bond. With, uh, the bond, uh, on the ballot, uh, that'll open up every single precinct. So e- everyone will have something on their ballot. There may be some confused about what else is on their ballot, but, we'll make sure that we get that information out there. There's a lot of contests and a lot of names on the ballot this year for municipal elections.
And you're doing the normal, uh, advisement of voters so that they know all of this.
We're meeting this afternoon to go over communications plan, but yes, it's through our social media, media outlets, our website. We're pushing as much information as we can out there.
Just the normal stuff that gets voters. We let people know what are their polling places, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, we, we have to do motion, right? On polling places.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I move pursuant to Idaho Code thirty-four-three oh two to designate the polling places for the November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three consolidated election as presented by the clerk.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have claims journal. Need a motion.
We're just ratifying this, correct?
Ratifying. We've already, the checks have already gone out.
Right, because they had to go out.
Yeah.
Earlier. I move to ratify the authorization made on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three to pay the claims on the claims journal dated September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay.
Second.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have, uh, personnel actions. Uh, fourteen hundred and forty-nine mass adjustments. That's a lot of adjustments. And two-step increases and sheriff's paper. Is there a motion?
Just a question to Bethany. Is that the, all the raises kicking in from the last budget or?
Yes, this is the big batch of your new fiscal year. Um, we greatly appreciate every office and department did such a fantastic job working with us on the distribution of their merit allocations. And huge for those two, my team who do the uploads and it's a lot of, a lot of Excel documents and verifying that everything's accurate. So you'll probably see a good chunk again next week as well. Um, but that should then wrap it up as far as this high volume. Thank you for all your support of the races this year.
All right. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the, uh, motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
We have the assessor's office here with us today.
Good morning. I'll apologize in advance. We're killing a small tree for all these tax cancellations.
We've been saving them up for a bit.
Yeah, we're trying to, uh, we did have to put them to the side for a little bit as we were working on PTR to get that all through. Uh, we were short staffed for a while, so we focused on carpet tax relief applications. And now we're getting caught up on homestead exemption applications, uh, in time for the tax bill. So, and we're fully staffed, um, currently, so.
What happened with Wild River Investments?
So these are two thousand and twelve, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, forever ago. So these are, and a treasurer could probably speak to them a little bit, but these are old tax deeds. Where, and they're just remnant dollars. So we're just cleaning things up of a very small impact.
All right. All right. Well, I see we got a list here. Is there any, uh, questions from the board? I had my question on Wild River. That sounds a little unusual. Go back two thousand and twelve, but it's just a small thing, correct? All right.
Oh, there were three years, three years were then, plus thirteen and fourteen.
So we have.
Just quite, how, how, how does that all come to, to the, to the surface and have to be addressed?
So the, these properties, I mean, they did not pay the property taxes for the course of three years. Then we created a new policy, I'm gonna say about three years ago, where we let those tax dollars stay out there for this duration on purpose. Um, normally you won't want to keep tax dollars out there. But, and then once everything goes through the full process of the tax deed and everything, we come back in. I believe these are in Ada County's name currently. So once they become in our name officially, then we write off the taxes. So it just takes.
That time to get through all the process.
We, we go through the whole process.
That's right. For, for people to, looking at that, why were we lingering all these things?
And I think when the property sells, um, correct me if I'm wrong, when the property sells, they want to have those tax dollars out there because those, that part of that proceeds goes towards those taxes first.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Now these are, the rest of them are Homer's exemptions that's been filed.
For the most part, they are homestead exemption applications that have come through. So these people will be getting a little bit of tax relief, um, which creates a lot of work on our side, but for somebody buying a home in today's market, they could probably use all the levers they can get.
Now, do these reflect the, uh, that, that case up in Leighton, Jerome County?
Kind of. So.
Okay.
So what that does is basically we're doing quarterly homestead exemption. So if they are applying later in the year, they, instead of getting a larger credit, it will be discounted slightly based on, um, if the property did not have the homestead exemption on it prior to, which in our eyes makes sense because if it was a rental property in the beginning half of the year, why should they get the full exemption? So, so.
And that's how that case is ruled, is quarterly, uh, pro-rations?
So what that case is, is, um, basically the state tax commission and those two counties. And they went with quarterly and the state tax commission doesn't think that that's legal because there's no proration in the law. Uh, since then, we've joined, um, kind of that argument. But the state tax commission in the district court finding, uh, the judge said that the state tax commission overstepped their boundary. So based on that, it gave us an opportunity to jump in.
To proceed?
Right.
And they appealed it to the Supreme Court, right?
Correct. And right now it's under, they're, the tax commission is dealing with a lot of the House Bill two ninety-two stuff. So I think they've submitted for an extension and they're, and we are working with, um, uh, one of the attorneys with Ada County to file paperwork once it does officially go to the Supreme Court in, in favor of.
Yeah, sure. Okay. Well, that's good. I'll accept the motion on the, uh, we call them tax cancellations, but they're not. They're adjustments. But we're gonna call them tax cancellations because that's what the, the law says.
The law requires.
I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes two tax cancellations for two thousand and twelve, two tax cancellations for two thousand and thirteen, two tax cancellations for two thousand and fourteen, one tax cancellation for two thousand and fifteen, one tax cancellation for two thousand and sixteen, one tax cancellation for two thousand and seventeen, two tax cancellations for two thousand and twenty-one, three tax cancellations for two thousand and twenty-two, and three hundred and eighty-one tax cancellations for two thousand and twenty-three. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now we have with us our distinguished treasurer, Beth Ma.
Morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Um, as you see from the agenda, one of our top priorities is preparing for the two thousand and twenty-three tax bill. So three hundred and eighty of tax cancellations here, that, that is a lot of work for us, but, um, frankly, I'm thrilled to see them now. Um, so thank you, Brad, and everyone in the team, because by receiving these now or early October, we're able to process them so that they can be reflected on the November bills. Um, so again, I'm really happy to see these now. If it comes in much later in October, we won't be able to reflect those on the bills. So happy to process these now. It will be a top priority. So these will be on the bills that we send in November. Um, otherwise, um, again, all things related to the twenty-two, twenty-three tax bills, working closely with the clerk's office, um, entering levies into the system with the, um, assessor's office, and then of course with your IT department, um, in programming the changes for House Bill two ninety-two. So it's, it's full steam ahead on that, um, top priority and appreciate the collaboration. It's, it's a countywide effort. Um, we'll be sending the bills, but there's a lot of people who are really helping a lot. So grateful for that.
Good.
And that's it from our office.
Well, we are a whole team.
That's right.
Thank you.
And working through the new, both transitions. Two ninety-two, the new system, all, all of those things are requiring a lot of co- cooperation, coordination.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you. All right, moving on, we have, uh, minutes to approve. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Hey, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, we have waiting past. We have a notice of a lien. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve one notice of lien as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have juvenile court services, uh, agreement number one-five-three-nine-three, the operating plan. Is there questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the juvenile court operations plan.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Parks and Waterways, we have, um, a couple weddings.
I move to approve the two Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Hey, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we have a number of agreements, one of which we've already pulled from the, uh, from the list. Agreement number thirty-five has been pulled. Uh, so I'll accept the motion on the balance of the agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the fifty agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Just note that it's number thirty-five on the agenda and it's agreement number one-three-seven-eight-four-dash-six-dash-two-three.
Uh, yes. Okay. We have a motion on that. Is there any discussion on any of the agreements? Most of these are renewal agreements, I might add. So I'll accept the, we got a motion, so all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the weekly indigent items.
I move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the mo- you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there any more, any further business that needs to be brought before the board today? Uh, hearing none, we're in recess. Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you, everyone. Good morning. Uh, the Ada County Commission is sitting as a board of the Ada County Emergency Medical Services District. They will conduct its weekly Open Business Meeting. Today is the, uh, twenty-eighth day of September. The time is nine thirty-eight. Okay, all three commissioners are present. We also have with us, uh, identify yourself.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Elizabeth Duncan, communication.
New IT guy. Okay, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
All right, we have first up on the agenda, the claims journal dated September twenty-second. I'll accept a motion.
I move to ratify the authorization made on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth to pay the claims on the claims journal dated September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have personnel actions. I'll accept the, uh, motion to approve the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have approval of the minutes for the, um, Medical Services District, uh, for the nineteenth of September.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the sear- chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
You have eight agreements. Uh, is there any questions or any discussion on any of the agreements? A lot of these are renewal agreements.
Renewal agreements, Mr. Chair, and, um, under four A agreement, I'm reading my glasses, one-five-three-nine-four. That's actually a grant from, uh, Ada County, uh, Emergency Management Joe Lombardo Shop to replenish some of our supplies in our, uh, rescue task force bag, the kits, new chest seals and chest decompression needles and that type of thing.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on the eight agreements? Not all.
You got, uh, you got the Bonneville billing and collection, the debt collection service on there. So, uh, just wondering how that's going. Obviously, medical debt collection is a sensitive topic, but, uh, how, this is what the second or third year?
I believe this is the second year, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson. We went out, back out to RFP, I believe it was last year for, and Onaville was chosen again. Um, yeah, they, they, they do a good job for us. You know, medical debt collection is a tough thing. Uh, and, you know, we try to collect, uh, on the bill before we send it over to them. But once it ages out to six months, um, you know, it's better to, to send it to them to, to work the claims opposed to trying to work it out of our office, so.
Been hearing any concerns or anything from the public?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, no, not really, not from Bonneville. Occasionally we'll get somebody that has questions or what have you, but, uh, um, not that, anything that has come across my desk, certainly.
Okay. Any more questions or discussions on any of these agreements? If not, I'll accept the motion.
I'm, I move to approve the eight agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize this chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we get the, our favorite part of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair, commissioners, good morning. Uh, just a few quick things to update you on. Uh, probably all saw the news that J.J. Saldana, uh, passed away last weekend. He was actually the chair of our Community Advisory Board for Access. And so he did, uh, really amazing work for us and got us really involved in, in, uh, a, a lot of different areas of, uh, you know, the Hispanic community and, and, uh, we'll, we'll certainly miss him. Uh, you know, and unfortunately we'll have to replace him on that, that board here in the coming months, but, uh, that was a big loss for us. Uh, the other bit of news that we got last week, and this isn't great news, with, uh, the G E M T stuff, the federal government, uh, CMS is looking at, uh, disallowing or eliminating the ability to include the non-transport portion of your costs in your cost report, uh, that you have to submit each year. So basically what I'm getting at there is we would not be able to include any of the costs that, uh, we, that the fire departments have in responding to the calls, which that really drove that co- annual cost up quite a bit because, you know, fire departments are expensive. And so, uh, just a preliminary look at it, that means that we're looking at a potential revenue loss from eight million dollars a year down to one point five to two million. Um, if there's anything that makes things a little bit easier is the only cost that we can include is my department. So that eliminates the need to figure out how we're gonna divide this money up and, um, you know, utilize it for access because it would all come back to Ada County Paramedics since we're the only cost that we can include in that. That seems the way that, uh, CMS is leaning right now. There's an OIG, um, investigation in the state of Washington right now looking at specifically that. And, uh, you know, luckily for us, we didn't get this money three years ago and start spending it on things and personnel because Washington, a lot of fire departments up there are trying to figure out what they're gonna do with that revenue loss. Uh, because they won't be able to sustain the operation they have today. So, um, I've been in contact with a consultant from, uh, PCG that did the work on, uh, with Medicaid to get the state plan amendment submitted. to get the state plan amendment submitted. And, uh, I think that the, the best case scenario that we could see would be that they would allow some of the costs for the actual time that that uh, engine company or squad or what have you was assigned to the call. But we wouldn't be able to calculate the costs of readiness for, uh, the entire year, which we will be able to do for our department because, uh, you know, our focus is purely on emergency, uh, pre-hospital medicines, so. But I'll, I'll certainly keep, uh, the board up to date as we learn more on that.
Okay, any questions?
And that was just a ruling by them. What, what prompted them to change?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, I, I believe it's that OIG investigation in Washington. That what I heard from the consultant is that CMS is looking at this as being a transport benefit.
Instead of.
Yeah, and what we're trying to do, and I, and I believe, uh, Chief Niemeyer on behalf of the Western Fire Chiefs Association and the International Fire Chiefs Association, uh, I think they're gonna try to reach out to CMS to make sure that they understand that we have a tiered response system and, and, you know, those fire departments are part of how we take care of a patient. It's not just the ambulance responding. Um, so, uh, we'll see if that's effective or not. I know Chief Niemeyer felt like, uh, the decision had already been made, but they haven't, they haven't put the decision out yet, so. We're still kind of in a holding pattern to see if it all happens or not, but that'll be a big impact.
Now, this, this would affect, this is a national decision, so it affects people all over the United States.
Yeah.
Is there a general, um, concern in other places? Because it seems to me that other places would have a lot more impact, negative impact, budgetary impact on local.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, I believe that, you know, anybody that's getting that, that GMT, um, uh, through a state plan amendment right now, you know, is gonna be impacted if they're including the non-transport costs in, in, uh, in their cost reports on an annual basis, so it'd be a big impact. I know, uh, in, in, uh, Washington, some of those departments are looking at, you know, millions of dollars of lost revenue per year. Uh, I did hear that there is even some potential based on, uh, the OIG's final report that some of these agencies might have to pay back some of the money that they got. Um, because if, if it was determined that the cost reports were improper, they were in, including improper cost in, in the allocation, but the state plan amendments were approved by CMS, so I don't know if that's actually gonna happen or not, but, uh, luckily, that's not happening to us.
This will, this, this is going to generate discussions at a national level, obviously, then.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the, the other thing, I believe the, uh, Idaho Fire Chiefs Association was gonna reach out to our national delegation just to see if they were aware and see if there's anything that they might be able to do.
That's where I was going next in terms of what the communication system was to the national, uh, the legislators, because they're the ones that appropriate the money.
Yeah.
Is this in, in keeping with what the legislation, I mean, it's an administrative rule. So is this in keeping with what the, they, the Congress interprets what the, the instruction they were giving to the agency?
We don't know that yet.
We don't know that yet.
That's still under discussion.
Yeah, it seems to me that, uh, oh, I, that's offices, Becker, Jambon, correct?
Right.
Yep. The, uh, that, they don't have the statutory authority to unilaterally make those decisions.
Right.
That's where I was going, yeah, that, that, that's not it. That's not in the wheelhouse of decision-making, I would think, but, uh, somebody's gonna have to review that.
They'll have to determine that. Determine, yeah, interpret the statutes.
Yep.
Because, um, I know they'd like to have authority to supplement the legislature, but, uh, they don't.
Yeah.
So it depends on how that legislature, what their intent was and what the actual language says.
Yeah, and what the, and then what the response is to this.
Yeah.
Uh, the only other thing with GMT is, uh, we're getting meetings set up with the Medicaid director to, uh, discuss where they're at in the process of getting that FTE hired. Um, the consultant said if our state plan was approved by the end of the year, which it might be, that it sounds like the CMS is kind of waiting on this decision to see what they're gonna, uh, approve in state plans. There's like us and four or five other states at that final approval process. Um, but we're, we're getting a meeting set up so that if that occurs, our first payment could actually be in April of next year. It would be backdated to January twenty-fifth of this year, so. It'd be a partial payment, but.
Retroactively paid back.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any, any other updates?
No, sir. Not, uh, the bear of great news to start it on that, but, uh, that's how things work.
Uh, you're not hauling anybody to the, to the hospital because of the COVID, are you?
Uh, you, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you know, I looked at the numbers yesterday and we're staying right around three. You know, anecdotally, I've heard reports, even within my own department, that we've had some people that have gone out with COVID. Uh, I was even in a conversation with Bethany this morning that they're seeing kind of an uptick in the number of people that, that have it. And there's just like, this time of year, you've got a lot of other things going around. I, I kinda had a little bit of respiratory stuff over the weekend tested on Monday and tested negative, but, um, there's stuff going around and allergies and so.
Yeah, and they're all jumping because of the news.
Yeah.
And, uh, in a lot of cases, it doesn't turn out to be the awful COVID.
Yeah, the cold season is here too, and it's very similar.
And cold and flu, and even if they get that, it's not as anywhere near as severe as it has been.
No, no, I think, uh, Mr. Chair, I think that, that we hit the peak of that severity on this during the Delta surge, which, you know, that was fall of twenty twenty-one. Um, since then, with the Omicron, uh, sub-variants has been pretty mild. You know, it's just, it's really much like the flu or those types of illnesses. You have those people that are immunocompromised or have so, some other issue, uh, that can be impacted more severely, but, um.
All right, well, you don't have any, any other updates for us?
No, sir.
Okay, now we have on the agenda an executive session. Is that, is that a necessary, a need?
Are we gonna do that?
Well, we gotta probably take it off our agenda then.
Put it up, put it on when we need it.
Okay, well, there's no one's further business, uh, we'll be in recess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Yeah.